Let's go to work. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, the 20th of May, 2019. This is a meeting of the State and City Council, a regular meeting, and we are going to work. Please join me for a flag salute. However, it said... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Let's see. The staff is here with the exception of Keith, who is not here this evening, excused, and everyone else is here that needs to be. So, are there any additions to the agenda? No? Are there any declarations of ex parte contact, conflicts of interest, or bias? No? Okay. Presentations, comments from the public at this time? Vicki Ann, please.
Thank you, Joyce.
Yes, please.
Thank you very much.
For the record, just tell us your name and where you live, please.
Right. So, I'm Vicki Ann Velosik, and I am the personal representative for the estate of Terry Holly. So, I'm here on behalf of the estate to talk about the 485 West Ida property. And I live in Salem. I just put the 485 on the form because I thought that would be a good reference point for everybody here. And so, I've provided information. This is an appeal to you because when Mr. Holly was alive, he started the project. I'm gonna just summarize the paperwork that I gave you, okay? Because I know you can't read it all really quickly. And then, I'd kinda like to talk about the project just a little bit. So, I know I only have 10 minutes. So, I'll probably come in under that. It's...I'm a little nervous up here, so sorry about that. So, the project, as most of you know...
Squeeze the time thing down under 10 minutes, please.
I'll do it. Okay, yeah. I don't know if I can, but I don't know if I can talk for 10 minutes. So, the project started, Mr. Holly started in 2015, the ever...the property on the corner of Evergreen and Ida. As most of you know, I mean, the town, every place I go, people are talking about it. We were in McDonald's getting a Coke the other day, and a whole table of people were talking about the project and the house. So, there seems to be a lot of interest in the community about the house. It is a very unusual circumstance. In 2015, the original home, that was...it was one of the original Miller home. It was the Miller logging family home. And it was a very beautiful home. It was one of the older homes, so it's...there are a lot of very old trees on the property. The property burnt to the ground and such that it had to be completely razed and rebuilt. So, it is...it was at that point that Mr. Holly decided that he wanted, rather than just building a home for himself, he was actually staying at the bed and breakfast in town and chatting with them and then making observations, just from living in the city of state. And he decided that he, instead of building a home just for himself, he wanted to go ahead and build a bed and breakfast. So, the permitting process and everything was done. He got to about 50% complete, so the building was half-done. And what that meant was there was studs, but no sheetrock, basically. And he passed last March 12th. He died. And it was in May that I was named the personal representative. So, as probably most of you know, the house languished for about three months. I got the noxious weed notice. The police came and said, "You've gotta do something about the property." The problem was that at that point, the property was bankrupt. There was no money. There was no money outright. The bank was holding on to quite a bit of money. So, there was a pot of money, but nothing easily accessible. So, this is my husband, Mark. So, Mark and I...my daughter is one of the beneficiaries, and that's my interest in this. Mark and I actually used some of our own money to get the project going again. We decided that it probably would be most honorable for Terry to help him realize his dream, even though he wasn't with us any longer and wasn't doing it himself. So, we have now completed the property. My goal was May 1st to get it on the market. Now, my goal is June 1st. We are very, very close to being done. We have some landscaping. Mr. Holly had made arrangements with the city of Staton, working with Michael Schmidt and the Director of Public Works, in the sidewalk improvements around the home. So, specifically, what I'm here tonight to present and ask for your consideration is that there was a waiver that was granted on Ida Street, which is the main thoroughfare. And that's a four-foot waiver. So, I understand, and I looked at all the city code, that Staton would actually like all new properties to have a six-foot sidewalk. The federal government requires a four-foot ADA-approved sidewalk. So, when you see the property, it has that, the very nice brick around it and that very cute fence. And so, on Ida Street with a four-foot waiver, we are going to be able to keep all of that up to just the end that's toward town. We're gonna have to take it out partially there and widen the sidewalks. So, just to be absolutely clear, I understand and want to 100% take out all the sidewalk and redo it. Because especially on Evergreen, it's a mess where the tree grew in it. It is not ADA-appropriate. The slope is more than 2% everywhere. So, from the very beginning of me taking over this project, I knew and 100% am in agreement to redo the sidewalk. What I asked for is that the waiver that was granted for Ida Street for a four-foot sidewalk be granted on the arterial, the smaller street, which is Evergreen as well. If that were granted, I still have to take out all of that brick wall, all the way to the corner, and do an ADA corner. I know that I'm gonna do it. If I have to do a five-foot walk, which is the current requirement, four feet on Ida, five feet on Evergreen, then I also have to take out a very...about an 80-year-old white oak tree. And I already had to take out a 100-year-old white oak tree next to it. That's the one that kinda messed up the sidewalk there. So, when I appealed the decision to the city manager, I have the original...my original request there, where you can see where I kind of laid out everything that I was thinking and exactly why I'm asking for what I'm asking for. That was reviewed by the city manager, and he agreed that it was incongruent that the main thoroughfare had a four-foot walk and the arterial had a five-foot walk. However, he said that his staff had good reason, and he was upholding what his staff had decided. So, now, I'm appealing to you to look over it, just because I think that five heads, six heads are better than one or two. I do feel that this site is very unusual. And I think that once you hear the story and you read the facts that I've laid out, that no one in their right mind could say, "Wow, that's just totally normal. That's not unusual at all." Because the entire circumstances are very unusual and very peculiar to this situation. So, it's not...it's not something that happens every day. And what I'm asking for, just to be very specific, is very little. I'm asking for the same waiver that was given on Ida Street, which requires me to put in a four-foot sidewalk, to be granted on Evergreen Street as well. Okay, so, four feet, four feet, rather than four feet and five feet. So, I'm asking for one foot, which to me doesn't seem like a big ask, but it will allow me, you know, to keep some of the landscaping. Because when you look at it, where we put in the driveway and ripped out that brick wall and everything, it's just very raw and very ugly. And I know that, you know, from looking at the State and Goals and your city goals and what you're looking for in your town, you know, looks are very important. I know that you want a town where people come in, people feel comfortable. Most of you have children. We are a part of this community now. My daughter will be a part of the community. She also has this, the little...on Ida Street, the 530 West Ida, that is in the estate as well. And she has said very clearly that she wants to keep it, and she wants to be a part of the community, where her dad was a community, a member for so long. So, the house is big enough. This is kind of the exciting part. So, that's my ask. So, I'm gonna kinda switch gears for a second and just say, this house is a very cool thing for the city of Staton. If we were in Portland, it might not be such a big thing. Even in Salem, there are houses that are big and beautiful and selling for a million dollars. But Staton doesn't have houses like this. And Mr. Holly really wanted to do something for the city. He wanted to give back. He wanted to make kind of a showcase where people could come and stay and take advantage of this beautiful park and the swimming pool. And I think that it's a real opportunity for the city of Staton to look at this project and say, "Yeah, this is a really good thing for our community." Rather than saying, "Yeah, it's okay," or whatever, "You're on your own," or, you know. I just think by partnering and becoming more of a part of the community and working as a team, that this could be kind of the cornerstone of a really great downtown refurbishment, a really good thing for your city here. So, that's what I have to say. And if you have any questions or any comments, I would love to hear them.
Okay. Thank you, Vicki. Questions or thoughts on this, folks? This is quite a topic, and it's taken a long time to get to this point. I don't know...what do you folks want to do with this? All the documentation is there, the letters back and forth between the city and...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is...really should be an agenda item, and seeing how it's not on the agenda tonight, I'm not gonna take any action on it.
I've thought that, too.
You know, I called the city twice, and I asked. And it's been...I have to say that it's not been easy figuring all this out, so I'm totally fine with that. I knew coming tonight that it...I'm not expecting you to say yes or no right now. And in fact, what I'd much prefer is that you look at it and really think about it and decide what's really...what you want your community to look like and what this will be like for your community. But I called the city, and the first answer that I got was that I would have to go through the planning commission. But then, when I received the denial of the appeal back from Mr. Campbell, he said that my appeal was directly to you. I looked at the statute. He gave me the statute. There was no process, and I called again down to the city of Staton, and they said that I could come to the council. And so, that's why I'm here. So, it has not been an easy road in any way, shape, or form, but I'm really glad to be here, and I'm glad for your consideration. So, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. We'll dig around in this a little bit more.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that needs to speak to the council under presentations or comments? If not, let's go to the consent agenda. City Council minutes for the 15th of April, and OLCC, change of ownership, 7-Eleven stores on 382 East Washington and 1925 West Washington. Those became...what did they become? 7-Eleven? What did they become?
They have been Circle K, and 7-Eleven has bought many, if not all, of the Circle K's in the area.
Okay. All right. What would you folks like to do with the consent agenda tonight? Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
A move that we approved, the consent agenda minutes as written.
A second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing any, the motion is approved, and we'll go on to business from the mayor committee and commission reappointments. The Public Safety Commission, Wendy Now and Sam Duke have filed applications or submitted applications to be on the Public Safety Commission again. I don't see either of them here tonight. I have copies...do you have copies of those letters in your packets?
Yes.
Okay. So, you can see those. I guess with you folks' consideration, I'd like to go ahead and reappoint those folks. And if that's all right, we'll do that. Yep.
Do we make a motion?
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve these two applications for the Public Safety Commission.
Seconded.
Okay. Thank you. A motion in a second to reappoint Wendy Now and Sam Duke to the Public Safety Commission.
I think Sam Duke is a new applicant, though.
I'm sorry? Discussion?
One's an appointment, one's a reappointment.
Wendy's a reappointment. Sam is an appointment.
Okay. Sam's an appointment. Wendy's a reappointment. Yeah. Okay. Good. Thank you. I only had it one way here. That's all right. Okay. Any discussion? If not, I'd call for a vote. With all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we'll declare those appointments and reappointments made. First business, real business tonight, where's my papers? Where are my papers? Oh, there's two of them. We've got two public hearings. Oh, boy. Here we go. Public hearing under ordinance 1032. Do, 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 do. Where is it? Which one? Let me see here. Amending the land use code to provide flexibility from development and improvement standards for properties on the National Register of Historic Places...historical places. Oh, here it is. Okay. Script to be read at commencement of public hearing. Good evening. My name's Henry Porter. As mayor, I will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing, the matter of land use file number 2-02/19 concerning legislative amendments to the Land Use and Development Code to provide flexibility in the application of development and improvement standards for properties on the National Register of Historic Places. The hearing is now open. At the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing, copies of the proposed amendments, the city's rules of procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You are encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice of this hearing...and I don't hear any, so there are none, to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case. I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias by any members of this body? And again, I hear none. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and address for the record. As a participant in the hearing, the city is required to notify of the final results of the process. We are now ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleishman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, members of the...two members of the public. This is the first of two public hearings tonight on legislative text amendments to the Land Use and Development Code. This amendment for this hearing, as the mayor said in his introductory statements, the intent of which is to provide a level of flexibility for meeting all of the design and improvement standards that are in the land use code for the, what is now less than a handful of properties that are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. There are, at this time, three properties in the city that are on the National Register. They are the Brown House at 425 North First, the Galen Sims Building at 189 North Second, and the Dietrich Building at 195 North Third. It's my understanding that the owner of the Boot Camp Building at 395 North Third has filed a application, if that's the right word, a nomination for that property to be placed on the National Register. And so, if that's successful, then this amendment could conceivably apply to that property as well as other properties generally in the downtown area.
Excuse me, sir.
Yep.
Where is the Beauchamp Building?
The Beauchamp Building is the corner of North Third and High, the former pharmacy building that is now owned by Julie Boxer and is vacant on the first floor and known as The Box up on the second floor.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
That was originally...Boot Camp was the notable early owner of the building and owned the pharmacy that was in there before the Odenthal's ran the pharmacy. So, the amendment that you have before you makes a number of various editing fix-its to the site plan review standards, besides addressing the issue of buildings on the None of them are really policy issues. They're really just things, as I was going through, and I said, "Oh, let's fix this. Let's fix that." The number of copies of plans that need to be submitted, almost everybody submits digital today, so we don't get paper copies. Proper reference to the Public Works Design Standards, rather than referring to the Standard Specifications, which is what they used to be known as, et cetera. But if you turn to page 4 of the exhibit, is...you'll see a new paragraph added that says, "Regardless of what all of the requirements above say, the decision authority may approve a site plan for a property on the National Register that does not meet all of the standards of 1720 or the access spacing standards of 1726, provided the decision authority finds the improvements that are proposed are in conformance with the federal standards for properties on the National Register. The site will provide safe ingress and egress to the public street, and that adequate stormwater management will be provided." So, it provides that level of flexibility. Looking at the Dietrich Building, we're not gonna see a site plan there. The entire building or the entire property is taken up by the building. Same for the Beauchamp Building. It's conceivable we could see something at the Galen Sims Building, but quite frankly, this was written to facilitate the conversion of the Brown House into an event center without them having to meet all of the design standards for park, paved parking areas, et cetera. So, it's an attempt to provide a level of flexibility for how these properties are developed, provided they are done in accordance with the federal standards for maintaining their historic character. The planning commission talked about this, held a public hearing. There was no testimony at the public hearing. I don't think there was any testimony at the public hearing at all, probably similar to what you'll get tonight, and forwarded to you for your consideration.
Okay.
And if you've got any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
All right. Are there any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
Dan, so no one on this list came and had any suggestions or concerns about any of this when you were going over it? You said that there wasn't any public...
I believe...I think we may have gotten some written testimony, but there was nobody at the public hearing. Folks from the Brown House had conflicting schedules that night.
Gotcha. And so, this "O" really just pertains to the Brown House? Because I was trying to think of which property would fit into this.
It would affect all three that are on the National Register today, and if the Boot Camp Building gets listed, then it would, too. But the practical impact is that we're...that it's really...I mean, it was done at the request of the San Diego Heritage Foundation, the owners of the Brown House. We're not gonna see a site plan review application for two of these because the buildings are there. We could see something happen on North Second at the Galen Sims Building that would require a site plan approval, you know, depending on what the current owner or future owner decides to do with the property. But this is really spurred by the requirement that in order for the event center to be established, the San Diego Heritage Foundation needs to go through site plan review process. In the 15 years that they've been working...15 or so years, they've been working to renovate the house. They never did anything with the city to change the use of the property from a house. So, in order to establish some type of gathering place there, event center, whatever, they need to go through site plan review.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Dan, I have a question. I just wanna know, from your professional opinion, will any of these changes in any way have unintended consequences of getting them out of having to make any ADA improvements, any sidewalk improvements in the future, any other infrastructure or paving outside of any kind? Is this gonna exempt them from any of those improvements?
It provides the opportunity for them to be exempt for meeting the standards in Chapter 1720, which do address paving of parking areas, addresses landscaping requirements, outdoor lighting requirements, what else would be in there that would directly impact them? Those are probably the three main areas that enactment of this would allow some flexibility in how they develop and design their site. As well as the...not just whether the parking area is paved, but it would provide the opportunity for the planning commission or staff, whoever's the decision authority, to waive the number of off-street parking spaces.
But it doesn't get them completely out? Like, it would have to go through a process for them to have ADA requirements or anything else waived? They'd have to go through a process with you or with the planning commission?
Right. They...this does not...this does not provide the opportunity for them to get out of ADA requirements, because the ADA is a federal law. It may be. I don't know, because I'm not all that familiar with all the details of the ADA. But it may be that that federal act relaxes the standards for properties that are on the National Register. I mean, the one...the one thing...the two things that having property on the National Register does is... does is federal money and federal rules may not adversely impact their historical nature. And two, there are tax credits available to private owners for, quote, "properly restoring."
Mm-hmm.
That's what the Secretary's guidelines are all about, what constitutes proper restoration of a historic property that you need to do in order to qualify for those federal income tax credits.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
Dan, forgive my nativity, but if this right here, if we have all these standards and things that we want people to do with their property, but this right here just kind of negates that, then why have the standards in the first place?
We have the standards in the first place because they set the standard for development in the city. What this does is recognize that there are a handful of properties that are special because they are of historic nature. We have other policies in the comprehensive plan that address, quote, "protecting and preserving" historic sites. All of the properties that are on the National Register or have the potential to be on the National Register are listed in the comprehensive plan as being of having some historic value to the city. So this is saying that we recognize that there are other values besides the general standards for developing property--
Gotcha.
-- that we want to maintain, and these select properties are special. And it doesn't just give carte blanche. We still need to make sure that, you know, provides -- that's why I say it's not an exemption from the standards, but it provides flexibility in how they're provided.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Council Hook brought up a good question. Let me understand this. So this would effectively change the Brown House to an event center?
That's what they want, yeah. This doesn't do that, but--
Right, no. It gets it one step closer.
But it gets, it provides the opportunity for the San Diego Heritage Foundation to submit an application for site plan review without having to meet all of the design standards in the code, particularly for, I believe their concerns are particularly off-street parking and the driveway spacing standards and how close driveways may be to other driveways and to intersections.
Right, that's my same concern. So the reviewer that's going to review this to allow could waive that. Am I going to make sure I understand this correctly?
Correct.
And grant--
Provided that they find that the site plan is in conformance with the federal standards for treatment--
Yes, right.
-- of historic properties, that there will be safe ingress and egress.
Okay, right, yep.
So it may not meet the code standards for driveway spacing, but we need to be able to make findings that it's safe and provided that adequate stormwater management is provided, which may mean not meeting all of the details of what's in the code, but Public Works Department has a level of comfort with what's going to be done.
I understand. And my concern is that when it becomes an event center, I am really concerned about that neighborhood over there having cars en masse parked all over the place. So that's why I want to make sure I understand this correctly.
Yep.
Okay. All right, anything else? Any other questions for, from the council? Is there any public testimony? Are there any other questions from the council? No? A staff summary. Dan?
I don't have anything more to add. You've got the recommendation from the Planning Commission and from staff to enact ordinance 1032 as presented to you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let me go ahead and close the hearing then. And council deliberation. What would you folks like to do with this?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I feel like my only real concern is that we make sure that this isn't going to affect ADA things, especially like with the parking lot. That's where it kind of wasn't clear, but it sounds like it's just about the driveway and off-street parking mainly. So I think, knowing that, like, I'm pretty comfortable with it. If there's further steps, though, I would hope that that was kept in mind of ADA accessibility with paved parking and proper spacing.
Okay. Anyone else? Everyone else, no? Well, let's go then to, if you're ready, go to a decision on ordinance 1032. What would you folks like to do with it? Got some options. We could continue the hearing, close it, and approve the first consideration, close it, and we already closed the hearing, and approve the ordinance with modifications, or close the hearing and retain the code unchanged. What would you folks like to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
A move that we close the hearing and approve the first consideration of ordinance 1032.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to close the hearing and approve the first consideration of ordinance 1032. And is there any discussion? Any more?
I just, I think maybe, I just have a clarifying question. So the Brown House would still have to bring a site plan forward to be reviewed? Is that my understanding?
That is correct.
That they haven't done yet?
They have not submitted an application yet. We had a pre-application meeting, but they have not yet submitted an application.
Okay.
And does that put point of order? Are we allowed to ask this stuff when the hearing is closed and we're getting new information?
Right. It's a move, not a question. I have a motion and a second, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we do. We've got a motion and a second. So I guess--
Really? I mean, can we discuss this some more?
Whereas this is a legislative decision and not a quasi-judicial decision, I don't have a lot of heartburn with having discussion and asking additional questions--
All right.
-- particularly in light of the lack of any public testimony anyway.
Go ahead with your question then. We'll allow it.
You're going to have to remember what I was going to say. So they still have to bring it forward. I just wanted to make sure that we're not, by doing this, we're not saying that it's automatically being approved, but--
Right, no, you're, what you're saying is when an application is submitted--
Yes.
-- there can be some flexibility in how those standards are applied--
Yeah.
-- for the properties on the National Register.
We're making the guidelines.
And that we're going off of the good judgment of Mr. Fleischman and/or the Planning Commission, basically.
And Public Works.
And our own good judgment.
Yeah.
Yes.
And our own good judgment, too.
Well, but we don't always see all of the site plan reviews, rightly.
You are notified of them as they--
But they don't come before us.
They don't come before you, but you have the ability to have them come before you.
We can call it up if--
Call it up either during or after a decision by either staff or the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Allison, would you poll the council on this one, please?
Sure. Council Patty?
Yes.
Council Hook?
Yes.
Council Orton?
Yes.
Council Quigley?
Yes.
Council Mullen?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
Okay, good, thank you. And so, and so, this will come back to us again. This is just the first consideration.
So you have a closing statement to make?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm sitting here, ready to read. "Council's decision may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Directors' appeals within 21 days in accordance with Oregon Revised Statute 197.830." All right. Moving right along, we go to the next one. Next order of business is ordinance number 1033, amending Land Use Code regarding fences in the commercial and downtown zones. Commencement of public hearing. Good evening. My name is Henry Porter again. As mayor, I will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of Land Use File Number 03, no, 3-02/19, considering legislative amendments to the Land Use and Development Code regarding standards for fencing in the commercial and downtown zones. Hearing is now open. At the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing. Copies of the proposed amendments, the city's rules of procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You are encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I'd ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice for this hearing. I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case, I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of this body? And I hear none. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and address for the record. As a participant in the hearing, the city is required to notify of the final results of this process. We are now ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleischman.
Thank you. So again, this is a legislative amendment to the Land Use and Development Code regarding the standards for fences in the front yards of properties in the commercial zones and in the downtown zones. Currently, the code prohibits fences in the front yard, and the front yard is defined as that entire area of the lot that is between a building and the street. My recollection from 2006 or '07, when the code was being rewritten, is the discussion was, well, we don't want fences in the front yard because we don't want big walls, because everybody was thinking of wooden, six-foot wooden privacy fences. The origin of this amendment was from a property owner in the downtown area who wanted to erect a wrought iron, three and a half or four-foot tall fence, whose building is set back off the street a little bit. And it seemed to make sense to allow it, other than the fact that the code doesn't. So that was the origins of the amendment. As presented to you and recommended by the Planning Commission, this amendment would allow fences in the front yards of commercial and properties and downtown properties, provided that the fence is no taller than 42 inches, that it's made of wrought iron or tubular steel or aluminum, that the vertical members are not any wider than one and a half inches in diameter or width, that they are not less than four inches apart, and that it is painted black, white, silver, brown, or dark green. You know, so it's not a visual obstruction. It's not, doesn't create walls along First Ave or Third Ave. There are a number of properties on Third Ave in the downtown area that have fences that would meet these standards. Not all of them are necessarily in the front yard, but the Arthtown Building, the Moxeyberry Building have wrought iron-style fences in the side yards, but right along the front property line. The house at the corner of Third and Burnett, which I believe is County Commissioner Colmes, has a fence around it that would meet this standard. So that's what this amendment would do should you choose to enact it. If you have questions, I'll see what I can do to answer them.
Go ahead. Questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Dan, as far as the wrought iron, is most of these properties, do they have just wrought iron, or are there other types of fencing in their front yards of these commercial businesses?
I would say that the properties that I'm thinking of, they're all wrought iron, as I would describe them.
Is there any kind of feedback from stakeholders as to what they want that you're aware of outside of the wrought iron?
Um, no.
Such as like a picket fence or some sort of final situation?
Yeah, no. No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Dan, the intended, what we're after is, these are open fences, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
These are open fences that provide a separation between the public space of the street and the private space of private property, but don't create a wall or a visual barrier to the properties.
All right, go ahead, Brian.
Dan, how about the house where the old Trask Mercantile used to be on Second Street? There's a huge fence surrounding that building on both sides.
There's a chain, yes, there's a chain-link fence that's been there for decades.
Nonconforming.
That is nonconforming.
That's the--
Although that's, again, technically, that's not in the side, that's not in the front yard. It's not between the building and the street. It's on the side yards.
Gotcha.
That's actually the Galen Sims Building, isn't it?
That's the Galen, right, that's the Galen Sims Building. And the code, you know, allows open fences up to 10 feet in height in the side or rear yards of these properties. And has for years and years.
Mr. Mayor, one more follow-up to my initial question. So as far as the being painted black, white, silver, brown, or dark green, is that in conformance with the color palette for downtown? Or is that just--
Yes, I mean--
Is that where it's derived from?
It is, it was actually, the original proposal to the Planning Commission was that they needed to be black or dark green. And as the result of testimony at their public hearing, they chose to add silver, brown, or dark, or white as well.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Other questions or thoughts?
I just have kind of the same question as in the last hearing about, is there any unintended consequence of these being, if they're, of them, making it so that it interferes with future infrastructure improvements, sidewalk improvements? Is this going to get them out of any of those things by having these fence requirements changed?
No, the fence would still need to be on private property outside of the street If we needed to do some type of infrastructure improvement and there's a fence there, then I guess it could increase the public's cost for that infrastructure improvement for the, either the care that needs to be taken around the fence or for the temporary removal and the replacement of the fence during the construction project.
So if there was like, let's say, a brick wall of some kind, and we needed to do infrastructure improvements, we may have to put forth the cost of taking it out and replacing it if that were the case?
Yes, that would be the case today. So if it was bare ground, our costs would be less. We'd dig it up and we restore the lawn or bare ground. If there's something there that's in the way, we're, we are usually responsible for its replacement if we disturb it.
Can I ask the--
Go ahead, yeah.
Lance, what, do you have any thoughts on this legislative amendment or non-amendment?
Much like the person that came earlier, that's exactly what we're faced with. And that is her argument to you guys, and we can talk about this another time, but she has a brick wall. She's refusing to put a sidewalk in because of a brick wall. This is kind of like that, but if we allow a fence in the front yard, as Dan is, we need to have some sort of agreement in place that if sidewalk or right-of-way improvement needs to take place, the improvements are on their dime, not on the city's dime. Taxpayers shouldn't be paying for that.
I agree.
That's my thought.
Mr. Mayor?
Other questions?
Yes, so a follow-up to that, Lance, but isn't, if it's in, I mean, if there's an easement there for utilities and such, I mean, they shouldn't be putting a fence on that anyway? That's my understanding.
People put fences on through easements all the time.
But with the understanding-- there for utilities and such, I mean, they shouldn't be putting a fence on that anyway? That's my understanding.
People put fences on through easements all the time?
But with the understanding that they are the ones...
That's right. The city will not be paying for that.
Yes.
Taxpayers shouldn't be on the hook for that. Especially at this point. You know, a lot of times, you have things that were done in the past, historical, we may kick in money to do that. But if we were to allow something to happen because of this new code, or revised code, then at that point, we need to make an agreement when we allow this to happen, that if it needs to be moved in the future, it's on their dime. And that's, that would be my take.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up on?
Yes, go ahead.
Do you feel the way that this is written, that that covers what you're talking about?
To be honest, Counselor, I haven't read, I haven't read it.
Okay. Can we discuss this, like, at a future meeting, and maybe ask these questions?
Yeah. Sure. Like a special meeting, a land use meeting?
Not even a special meeting, just like, can we continue this conversation at the next ones we have time to maybe have?
You asked me to read it?
I would love, I'm not going to ask you to do anything, but if Keith was here, I'd probably say, Keith.
Yeah. While, while that's not one of the options presented in the staff report, that's always an option to, to, once you're done getting public testimony, close the hearing, and continue your deliberations.
I would be interested in hearing what Lance has to say from his perspective, of if he thinks this would have any impact on the goals that we have set out for infrastructure, and including, you know, streets and sidewalk improvements. So I just would hate to have that pushed back because we made a decision that had unintended consequences to it.
I will say, Counselor, anytime something like this would happen, I believe Dan would forward that around for comment. And at that point, I would review it, or one of my engineers would review it, and we'd provide comment. And the comment would be just as I stated. An agreement would have to be in place. We'd have to make sure there would be no right-of-way, you know, it could be, like, right now, most of our right-of-ways are set, so as long as they don't put it in the right-of-way, we're not going to have any problems. Where we run into is that, like, the lady was here earlier, I forget her last name, but she's got a brick wall up, and we, it's got to be removed in order to put a code-driven sidewalk in place. That's what we want to avoid. So any kind of new projects going forward, we'd have to make sure that doesn't happen. And we could do that. I mean, that's, it's not that great of a deal, as long as we know about it in advance.
Mr. Mayor, what?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, just one last question. Dan, do you, knowing what Lance just said, do you feel comfortable the way that it's written? Because I'm comfortable if you guys are comfortable with this, as long as we're, we're taking into consideration all of these questions that we've asked.
Yeah, pretty much anything that takes place in the commercial or downtown zones, certainly if it's a commercial or mixed-use property in the downtown, requires site plan review in order to change the exterior of the property. That provides the, you know, that process provides the opportunity for public works to say, "Oh, we're going to need additional right-of-way, or we're going to need an easement here in the future, let's get that now."
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good now.
All right. Thank you. It's fine. Public testimony, is there any comments out there from our vast audience this evening? No? Okay. Questions from the council, again, on it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One more question.
Go ahead.
Dan, isn't there a setback requirement in the code for fences?
No.
That's how we have some of the issues come up where Arborbita's growing through, right?
We amended the code a few years ago to require hedges, new hedges, to be set back three feet from the front property line.
Right, I thought that sounded...
But not fences. Fences can be placed right on the right-of-way line.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Staff summary, Dan?
I don't have anything else to add. The options before you are to approve the amendments as presented, to modify them, to continue your deliberations to another night, or to retain, not adopt the amendments and retain the code unchanged.
Okay, thank you. Let's close the hearing then, and go to council deliberation. What would you folks like to do with this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Looking at this, Section One, Number Two, A, Two, Three, and Four, you know, I just think that maybe we should have a little bit less restrictions here as far as wrought iron goes. I would want to think that downtown people would want to put picket fences and things like that down there. I mean, I understand the height, that makes sense, and the color palette, as long as we're keeping some kind of consistency, but maybe eliminating Two, Three, and Four doesn't seem like a horrible idea to me. I don't know if anyone else is following me on that, but that's my two cents.
I'd hate to have our guys go out there with a tape measure to make sure the four inches are in compliance.
Yeah.
We could take out Number Two. I don't, I think the idea for the spacing is that it doesn't restrict the view.
Yeah.
So I get that part. I see what you're saying about maybe Number Two. I guess I don't want to see how much of a chain-link fence around.
Yeah, nor do I. But it's Number Three, the vertical, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Number Three, having the vertical members no more than one-and-a-half inches in diameter or width, I'm thinking picket fences are probably a little bit more than that. That's why I say Two, Three, and then Four, I could see that retaining, just to ensure that there's not any issues with chain-link fences.
Well, if I had my narrow-minded way, there'd just be restricted to wrought iron. That would be, that'd sell all this, how far apart, just wrought iron fences. But that's just me. What do you folks want to do with this? Dig around out some more another time? Yes?
I move that we close the hearing and approve the ordinance with the modification that we remove under Section One, Number Two, A, Two, and Three.
Okay, take those out.
Yep.
Okay.
Can you say that one more time?
So a motion, I don't have a second yet.
Right. I'll go ahead and repeat it.
I just wanted to repeat it.
For a motion to close the hearing and approve the ordinance with modifications, those being under Section One?
Section One, Two, Commercial and Downtown Zones, that's going to be subsection A, Two, and Three.
Two and Three.
Two line items that have been added.
There went my wrought iron-only argument. Oh, well.
Can I have, can I make a clarifying question?
Didn't some lose some?
For that motion? Is that possible?
What?
To make a clarifying, huh?
We have to second.
We need a second, yes.
Okay, I'll second it for discussion.
So we can discuss it?
Okay. So...
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, go ahead and discuss.
So, removing those two, like I said, I'm not big on the chain-link fence in the front yard. That's, that's not going to lend itself to leaving that option open.
I don't view it so, but I think that's a better question for Dan. Based on my interpretation of the code.
I don't, I don't know if it would prohibit chain-link. If all we said was, established the height restriction and said vertical members no less than four inches apart, I could see someone arguing that the vertical members of their fence are the posts that hold the chain-link, and they're, they're eight feet apart, or whatever, and therefore they meet the standard, and they're going to paint their fence twice.
No, it's already silver.
Right.
So we could possibly just throw in no chain-link fences under the subsection, right?
That, that would, that would address the concern. My, my other concern, if I may say so, regarding the amendment, if you remove the restriction on the width or diameter of the vertical members, you could, you leave it open, for instance, to have 12-inch boards vertically every four, with four inches separating them, which, you know, the idea was to have less fence and more open space, but to provide a separation between the public and the private space without having a wall, a solid wall. I mean, that, that was the thought process presented to the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission discussed was, "Look, we have these other fences that are downtown. There's, I don't know if there's any in commercial zones, and this, that, they, they look like they fit, let's try to replicate that."
Could we add wood onto Number Two? Could we add wood onto Number Two, and then maybe add a Number Five, no chain-link fence in the front?
Well, as I understand, Roberts Rule of Order, we have to vote on the motion before us, right?
Or you can amend the motion.
You can offer a motion to amend.
Can I amend the motion? I'd like to offer a motion to him.
With modifications, yeah.
I'm sorry.
The motion was with modifications, right?
Right, but she's asking if she can amend the motion and the modifications that were specified.
You can amend it.
I'd like to amend the motion.
Good.
Can I do that?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Okay.
You can make a motion, it has to be seconded, okay, to amend the original motion.
Right, or you can...
Or we can take a vote on this motion, and start fresh.
Or she can withdraw her motion, her second motion for discussion.
Can't he also rescind the motion?
Yes, you guys can both agree to rescind the motion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, I'll withdraw the motion.
Withdraw my second.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
You are learning.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
So we have a motion, we don't have a second yet, so...
No, he withdrew.
We don't have anything, she rescinded.
So we're about to prepare, oh!
Do you want me to do it? I'll do it.
We're on a clean slate, Mr. Mayor.
Am I back on board?
We're starting fresh.
Right.
And I'm about to make a motion.
Should.
Yes.
Maybe I can get them to consider just wrought iron. Persistence should be worth something here. Go ahead.
We like, we appreciate your efforts.
No, go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the hearing and approve the ordinance with the following modifications. On Section One, Number Two, Subsection A, Two, add wood fencing as an approved fencing type. Go ahead and strike Number Three. Right, that's where we landed on that? No?
No.
Okay.
Because that's how big the boards are.
Right. Okay, let's leave that in there. Yeah, I guess that would be my only thing, is just adding wood in Number Two.
And then no link.
And then no chain-link fence for, I guess Number Six would be the addition.
I don't think, if you say that it needs to be of wrought iron, tubular steel, or aluminum, or wood, then it can't be chain-link.
There we go.
Okay.
I guess that's the only addition we're going to make, modification, excuse me.
Would anyone, would anyone else?
Is chain-link meant out of the wood?
It's, it's not tubular, it's not tubular aluminum.
Okay.
Yeah, but the fences.
Would, would anyone, anyone?
I'm going to second.
Thanks.
Consider giving up on this for tonight, and come back and either do it again, or, or forget it?
For no order, there's been a motion and a second.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'm going to, I second it.
Okay. We can all suffer along here. Okay, a motion and a second then, Two. Let's see, what did you, where is it? Close the hearing and approve the ordinance with modifications, those being, take out in the ordinance Numbers Two and Three? Was that correct?
No.
No, we're not taking out anything, we're just adding wood.
They're adding wood as a permissible material, is what the amendment does.
Okay, adding wood.
Or what the motion does.
Or wrought iron, darn, or tubular steel, or aluminum, or wood. Okay?
And, and actually, what I will change this to is be made of wrought iron, comma, tubular steel, or aluminum, comma, or wood.
Period. Okay.
Semi-colon.
Oh, well, semi-colon. Oh, Lord, everything else in there was okay?
Yes.
The chain-link you left in?
No, the chain-link would be prohibited, Mr. Mayor, as I understand it.
Sweet loving Jesus. Okay. Under discussion, go ahead. I guess we have a motion and a second, and the modifications listed. So discussion, what would you, what else would you folks like to?
I'm good. I have no discussion.
Agonize this with, on this. Anything?
Nope.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote. Alyssa, would you poll the council on this, this thing?
Of course. Counselor Mullin?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Oert?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you.
And since the ordinance was approved with modifications, that means it needs to come back at your next meeting for a second consideration.
Okay.
Maybe we can have a little more of a circus over this. Now, that's fine, whatever you folks like to do. City Council's decision may be appealed at the Land Use Board of Appeals.
You don't have to read it.
I don't have to read that, thank you. I knew that. Unfinished business, Ordinance Number 1031, amending licensing standards for mobile food units. We are moving right along here. And, staff report, Mr. Fleishman.
Thank you. So you may recall that, when was it that this was here before you? April 15th. At your meeting, staff presented Ordinance 1031, which would amend the licensing standards for, for food trucks, formerly known as mobile food units in our code.
There we go.
To allow them to operate parked on a public street. As, as presented to you at that time, and as continues to be presented to you, staff's recommendation is to allow, is to amend the code to allow food trucks to operate in the public street, provided the street is a local street, not an arterial or collector's street, but not Third Avenue. That it has to be at least 20 feet from a crosswalk, that the service window must face the curb and not the travelway, that it must be adjacent to a sidewalk with a minimum width of six feet, and that it must be in a otherwise legal parking space, not in front of a fire hydrant, or driveway, curb cut, et cetera. Back in April, the council asked the staff to present you with some information about where food trucks could park downtown, and if these were, if these amendments were adopted. You've got in your packet a map called Available Locations for Food Trucks Under Proposed Changes. It shows roughly the spaces that would be available in green, and if you chose to allow food trucks on Third Avenue, where they would be allowed in blue. In addition, staff talked about other options that could be considered on Third Ave., our concern being that food trucks are not appropriate parked in front of City Hall, the theater, the police department, probably not appropriate in front of other retail businesses. So the idea we came up with is perhaps you could consider allowing them on Third Avenue, provided they were in a legal parking space, more than 20 feet from a crosswalk, and not parked in front of a building. parked in front of a building. And if you look at the map that's called Possible North Third Ave Food Truck Locations, those few green spots show where we have properties that do not have a building or a driveway access, or fire hydrant, and, and perhaps could be parked there without impacting a retail business, or officer, or, or other establishment. Staff continues to recommend enactment of ordinance 1031 as presented, by not allowing them on North Third Ave, just the, the few locations that we've highlighted here on, on the possible North Third Ave food truck locations, particularly in the downtown area, there's just so few of them, we, we're just not quite sure it would be of any great benefit to, to do so. Do you have anything else you want to add? So with that, ordinance 1031 is before you, and we'll answer whatever questions you have.
Mr. Ray?
Folks, questions?
Yes, Mr. Ray.
Go ahead, please.
Dan, and maybe this is a question for you, chief. So what happens if a food truck is parked somewhere and they're causing a ruckus, or just they're, like, it's, it's not a good spot, or it's upsetting, like, a business owner on Second Avenue? What do we do then? I would think that maybe it would drive, drive more traffic to people, but...
It, it would, it would depend on what they were doing. If it was, that they were parked in front of somebody's business, and the business didn't like it, and it detracted from their business, and people were not able to, to see their businesses, they were driving by, then there's nothing that we could, we could do if it, if the code for, allowed for it. If they were causing a disruption, we would determine what the disruption was. If it was, rose to the level of disorderly conduct, or a noise violation, things like that, then we would have to address it underneath those things.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So, what I, what I'm seeing with this, with this map is, it's showing that we're going to allow food trucks to be in front of other food establishments, and I can just see an uproar. So my question is, how are we going to not upset businesses with this change? That's for only, that, that map that you're talking about is only the proposed for Third Avenue. I'm talking about specifically, there's businesses on Ida and Second, that's a food establishment, and Marion, and Third Street, and on Marion Street, it, it's showing that it is allowing a food truck there. So I'm, I'm very concerned about not only the, like, just, if we're going to do it, let's do it for everybody, let's not put this Third Avenue is restricted, it just seems unfair, because there are other businesses on these other streets that will also be affected by the food trucks being in front of them. And I, I feel like maybe we even said we should put a time limit, like, you can be in this spot for two hours, and then you have to move. I don't know. I just don't, how are we going to not upset other businesses, and why are we restricting Third Avenue? Feels unfairly. That's my question. How and why?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I would agree that I don't, I don't like the idea of food trucks being able to park in front of at least other restaurants and eating establishments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Last time we were here discussing this, Mr. Mesa came in, he shared some concerns that really resonated with me, chief among them being that he is a brick and mortar business, that now has to compete with food trucks that aren't of the same nature, basically working on city property to sell their wares. So, that's still stuck with me, and I haven't been able to get that out of my mind, and I start to look at other cities, and all the other cities made accommodations like we have to have the food trucks in a central location. So I have a question for the chief. Chief, if all the cars that are for sale at a certain establishment in town, suddenly were sort of, came for sale on a, on a street, is that permissible?
So, I'm not, I'm not following what you're asking.
So the cars that are like a car lot, a used car lot that we know of where they're parked somewhere in town, if those cars are moved to Third Street, and all lined up at once, and all for sale signs on there, is that permissible?
No.
Why is that?
Because we don't allow vehicles to be for sale in the street.
Correct. If a business wanted to come and do mobile oil change, for example, and park in front of Jet Auto and change people's oil in the street, would we allow that?
No.
Okay, that's my point.
What's, I don't know, what grabs my interest in this is, it's already been pointed out, but on the corner of Third and, and East Marion, U.S. Bank, and across the street, Covered Bridge Cafe. You know, Covered Bridge is open till about two or three in the afternoon. It just seems to get so complicated. You can be there, you've got your potato wagon, or whatever, you can be there from four to seven, or four to eight, or something like that. I don't know, is that even workable? It just seems like it gets so awkward, if that's a good word. I don't know. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So I have a question for chief, also kind of a hypothetical. So, even though they're not necessarily main thoroughfares, arterial streets, do you have concerns that if there's a line, and they're selling ice cream, and now you've got kids conducting business in the streets, do you have safety concerns about that, that we're, we're having these food carts in a street, vehicles going by, people standing there conducting business around traffic?
And, I, I had concerns with it before as well, when, I was willing to, to make an exception for it when it was, came in and requested, is when the sidewalk was large enough, and, and wide enough, and they had to be faced so that the people had to be on the street.
But that assumes, no offense to my public citizens, that they're smart enough to, to then line up on the sidewalk, the longer sidewalk, right? It's a lot of assumptions.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm not on camera, so good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So all this came about because we have the brewery that's coming in, and they want to have a food truck at their location, and then we don't want to give privilege to just one food truck, but that kind of opens up another can of worms. That's, am I right in that recollection?
They, they came and made the request, and they said, is there any way possible that we could, because we did not allow it before. They asked if there was any way possible that, that they could have a food truck in front, in front of their establishment. And they met with Dan and I, and we looked at it to see if there was any way possible that they could do it. And the only way that we would allow it is that it was done in such a way so that they were relatively, basically off the street because of their side, because of the way the parking lot, parking was along, in front of theirs, and that the sidewalk was wide enough to, to handle it, and that it wouldn't obstruct traffic or, or visibility there. But at the same time, we didn't want to make a law that only affected that one business, and so we looked at options, and this is what we came up with, was it as an option.
Okay, thank you.
What would it do if we, this is, this is, this is possible, maybe not with this council, but possible. We follow, or pay attention to the concerns of some citizens that just say, don't allow food trucks to serve food on city streets at all. Just away with it.
Mr. Mayor?
What does that do?
That's the way it is currently.
Okay.
They, they have to be, they have to be pulled off the street and into a parking lot.
Is it, is that working?
Yes.
It kind of is, isn't it? Why don't we just do that?
That, that is one of the options available to the council, which would be...
Mr. Mayor?
Leave the, leave the code unchanged.
Okay. And with, with all consideration for your hard work on this, Dan, it's just, just one of those, one of those things.
Mr. Mayor?
So, yes, please.
I was wondering if there's any way that we could, this feels like it's, it's, it could be a good idea if, if maybe we had some more partners and stakeholders involved in developing this legislation, because there are going to be businesses affected. And so, I'd like to hear maybe what some of these businesses, I don't want to speak for these businesses, I don't want to speak for Ugo's Pizza, I don't want to speak for Covered Bridge Cafe, I don't want to speak for them. I want, I would like to hear what they have to say, and maybe see if, if we can come, if we can do like a task force, or a, some type of a thing where they come together and we do a work session, and they give their input on what they think, even if it's in writing. But I'd hate to just say, let's scratch all this work, because, you know, there are businesses, community members, that have these businesses that also want to do business in Staten, and they're small businesses. And I don't want to affect anyone negatively, but I don't want to say, let's just throw it all out. So is there a way we can do a work session, or however that looks most appropriate?
I, I, to some extent, I kind of agree with Counselor Hook with regards to, you know, throwing the baby out with the bathwater. However, however, I, I'm stuck around this being more of a public safety issue, and as such, I think that we, I think it would be wise for us to vote on this tonight. And, and to Counselor Quigley's point, I am a big fan of food trucks, and I think that as a city, we should, we should consider as part of that, what our options are for embracing food trucks, and maybe making some kind of consideration in downtown for a place where food trucks can conduct business safely.
Yeah, I like that.
And, and a place where people would know to go for those food trucks. I think that that would be very good, very healthy for Staten.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
To Counselor Hook's point as well, I'd like to, I would like the food trucks to have a voice in that as well, and not just hear the voices of, I think our, our brick and mortar restaurants are very important, but people like food trucks too, and, and that is kind of a wave right now. I also think that there would be some businesses that benefit from having food trucks in front of them, it draws businesses in, you see food trucks outside of the, the Chicken Coop, and, I mean, you...
Peking Co.
Oh, excuse me, the Peking Co., and places like that. And so I do see the benefit of having that draw of food in front of businesses to kind of help facilitate people bringing in business there too.
Okay, thank you. Are all of you ready to vote to retain the code unchanged?
No. Mr. Mayor, just a minute. Dan, is there any way that we can put into the code to essentially allow for some sort of consent from the business owner that the food truck would be parking in front of, to be allowed there? Is that something that you can even have in the code?
I would be very concerned about having that type of provision in the code, and that's why we tried to write standards for, that, that don't require you to go get the consent of someone else in order to be located.
All right, thanks for some idea.
The council has not held a public hearing on this, this is not an ordinance that requires a public hearing. But if you wanted to solicit broader input on it, that would be an option, is to, rather than take action on this ordinance tonight, request to get a public hearing, and, and we could notify the, the brick and mortar eating and drinking establishments in the downtown area that would potentially be impacted, the food truck operators that are currently licensed in the city, or at least those for whom we had email addresses, were notified, and, and a copy was sent out to them. I'd just, you know, throw that out as, as an option, if your concern is getting feedback from the, from the restaurateurs. You know, we did, staff did not reach out to them, as we did to the food truck operators, and can do so, and we could do a public hearing either at the next meeting, or the mid, no, Alyssa's shaking her head, not at the next meeting, we can, at a future meeting, to be arranged.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm, I'm starting to warm up to this idea, go ahead, please.
I, if you will allow me, I'd like to make a motion that we hold a public hearing on ordinance 1031 at a future meeting, and that the planning director reaches out to local businesses in the downtown area, and food truck operators that are currently licensed in Staten.
Okay, so I've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So a motion to set a public hearing at a future date to assess the concerns of our community.
Yes.
Broad scope. Do we need to do anything on, on this item tonight, other than that, Dan? Okay, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Dan, I just want to just note that, I believe that the owner of this spud bus is, like, there's, I believe, from what a friend told me, that there is a food truck association, and he's the head of it.
And Ken is an officer of the association, as I understand.
I just wanted to make sure you knew that, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I think, don't we have a...
There is light at the end of the tunnel here.
You need to vote on it, I believe.
Discuss your vote on it. Yeah, I'm good now.
Motion to set a public hearing.
Right.
Set a public hearing.
Right.
Yeah, I was getting there.
Okay. Sounded like you were going on to the next item.
I appreciate the help, thank you, Dan. Is there any other discussion?
I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would just, again, like to say that I do like the idea of a public hearing, but I would be much more comfortable having that public hearing around the realm of possibilities where there, where food trucks are not in the street, where that particular part of the ordinance is just completely removed, and we, and the discussion is more around, if that's not an issue, possibility, what our possibilities are going forward, but that's just my opinion.
I see, sorry.
I'll, I'll second his sentiments. My concern is that we're giving away public property, and you're going to have another issue come before you in the next couple of months, we're going to have the same issue faced, and so, my concern is where that, and the public community, or public property be operated for a for-profit reason. And I share the same concerns about safety. When the kids were going down Washington Street, when the, when a couple of food trucks were parked on that private property that was extended into the street, off the curb, into the Washington Street, so I share his sentiments.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
So we're ready for a vote? No other questions, thoughts?
Yeah, thoughts, really.
Considerations.
First, Dan, I really appreciate these maps, they're super helpful, so thank you for those. And second, I do share the same concerns that both counselors at the end of the dais have shared. I, I don't feel like us opening it up for public comment ties us into saying, yep, we're going to do it, because we can still say that, you know, these are our concerns, but perhaps more minds coming in and, and giving their input can come up with more solutions for it.
Do, do any of you see...
We can still say no.
Do any of you see yourselves giving in to constant pressure over the next month about just leaving the code unchanged? Okay, most of them. Alyssa, would you poll the group, please?
Sure. Counselor Ort?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
No.
Counselor Mullen?
No.
Motion passes three to two.
Three to two, okay, so, future public hearing on licensing standards for food carts. Okay, city code rules, city council rules update. Alyssa, can you lead us through the wilderness of this?
Of course.
Dun, 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 dun.
All right, mayor and council, so back on April 15th, Keith and I brought forward the proposed city council rules, and after, we gave you some time to review it, and I hadn't heard anything from any...
hadn't heard anything from anyone, so we decided to go ahead and bring it back forward to the council with the one change regarding the number of days before a meeting packet would be distributed, from changing it from three days to five days. Other than that, there's not been any other additions, we did, I did add a paragraph in here about discussion that was had at the budget committee meeting regarding the stipends, and that that could be something discussed in the future and added as a revision to the rules, once the budget's passed, and we're moving forward from that, so if you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to answer them.
I have one question.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Go ahead, please.
Did you guys know you guys did a great job on these rules?
Why, thank you.
No, it's great. You know, there can, there can be times when a generally congenial group like this has to refer back to rules to, for one reason or another, and rules are necessary. I'm kind of thankful at this point that we don't, somebody doesn't throw up rule 16.6.2 every time we try to have a hearing or, or something. Some may want to, but don't, so I appreciate that. What would you like to do with this, folks? Counsel deliberation and a decision.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to move that we approve the new council rules as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the council rules as submitted, did I hear that right?
Sure, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That works.
Discussion? Resolution 987, rules of the state and city council. Any discussion? Let's go to a vote. Alyssa, would you do the number again, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. There's no new business, there's no staff commission reports. Thank all the staff for being here this evening. No presentation comments from the public, either of you, wonderful people, okay, there's no business from the city manager. I have one thing, chief, any of our guys look at the, down at the parking lot on Florence Street, access to the bridge, did anyone check that trailer that's been down there for a week?
I don't know if they'd have or not, I'd have to look and check and see if they checked into that.
You knew it was down there?
I did not.
Oh, okay. Suburban type thing, and a, and a trailer, camper, travel trailer.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, the Park and Ride, not the...
Down on the end of Florence Street.
Because there's, there's one down on the Park and Ride that's been called into OSP, that's a trailer and a...
That's out towards Sublimity.
Yeah, there's a trailer and suburban down that way as well.
I think, maybe that's it, I don't know, I just got a request from a citizen to...
Yeah, it's, it's about the, the one at the Park and Ride.
Oh, okay.
And, and that one's been, Oregon State Police has been notified of that.
He's been wandering further afield than he usually does, thank you. I don't have anything else or business from the council this evening? Future agenda items for June 3rd, public hearings, 2018, 19 fiscal year, fiscal year budget and revenue sharing, AFSCME, union contract renewal, and a budget adjustment. Is there anything else this evening? If not, let's go home.
Please, it's over time, guys.
111 to 111.
Were you waiting?